Okay, it's seven o'clock. It is June 15th and this is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Mr. Molitor this time to say the pledge of allegiance and we can all stand and listen to him. Go ahead, Mike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next, our introductions and roll call. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor. We have Pam Mortensen. Are you here?
I'm here.
Mike Molitor?
Here.
Shannon Bruce?
I'm here.
John Chumperlin?
Here.
And city staff, we have administrator Michael Barone.
I am here.
We have community development director David Abel.
I am here.
Finance director Brian Graham.
I'm here.
And our chief of police or public safety director Paul Falls.
I am here.
Director of administration, Ellie Paulscho.
I'm here.
Our public works superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
Our city clerk Chris Lindquist.
I'm here.
And we have our city attorney Ron Beatty with Kennedy and Graven.
Here.
And we have our city engineer Allison Falski with WSB.
I am here.
And we also have city engineer with WSB, Adam Gadbo.
Present.
Adam, are you here?
Present.
Okay, we can hardly hear you.
I don't know.
We can just barely hear you.
Okay, I'll try to get closer out loud.
Okay, yeah, we can barely hear you. So we'll move on. If you can fix your audio, we'll move on. We have our agenda, approval of the agenda. Is there emotion, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? With none, then is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Yes, John, I have a.
This is Shannon, so move. Okay, I think John Chumperlin beat you, Shannon. So Mr. Chumperlin made the motion and Ms. Bruce seconded. So we'll go down the line. All those in favor signify with aye. Lisa Whalen, mayor, I say yes. Pam Mortensen, yes. Mike Molitor?
Yes.
John Chumperlin?
Yes.
Shannon Bruce?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. So next, we'll move on to our special presentations this evening. We have one. Mr., our chief of police and emergency management director, Chief Falls. I believe you're on.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. So you're all aware of the death of Mr. George Floyd in the city of Minneapolis about three weeks ago and all the events that have kind of taken place since. So I think that has brought a lot of question to the minds of the public and as a result of that, I've gotten a couple of inquiries, not a lot, basically asking what measures the city of Minnetristo or the Minnetristo Police Department specifically has in place to ensure or prevent anything like that from occurring here in our city. And so I think that's a valid question. I think, I can't comment on Minneapolis, but I can comment on what we do here and what our practices are. And so this is just meant to be essentially a summary. Certainly if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them at that point. But with that said, I think, you know, use of force topics are very, very complex and there's just so many factors involved in it. But with that said, we have a lot of measures in place here in the city of Minnetrista and at our police department that would help us be able to evaluate situations as we do on a daily basis. And just to highlight some of those, I think I'd like to say, first of all, I think Minnesota as a whole is kind of ahead of the curve in a lot of ways with the level of training, education requirements and so on and so forth. Here specifically, the Minnetristo Police Department, we are constantly training, both hands-on and in the classroom or online. That's a constant effort. It occurs each and every year. And I'm happy to report that we are part of the Patrol Online Training Series, which is actually a training courses that are developed by the League of Minnesota Cities. So they are current and they are relevant and they are completely up to date. If there is an update in the legislature or the state statutes or anything changes, they incorporate that change right away so that the next year, when you take the training over again, it is up to date and relevant once again. It's not just the same old training year after year. Some examples of trainings kind of related to the issues that have been going on recently are procedural justice and police legitimacy, ethics and professional conduct, implicit bias. And there's two courses in implicit bias, Part One and Part Two. Mental health. There are four courses in mental health, Part One, Two, Three, and Four. Again, all of this is done on an annual basis. Persuasion and de-escalation tactics, in custody deaths, serving those with autism spectrum disorder, use of deadly force, use of deadly, use of force legal issues, and then use of force readiness aspects. In addition to this, we have a lot of hands-on use of force training. This is just the classroom portion of it. And like I said, I think there are minimum requirements in law enforcement for training and we by far exceed those minimums. Generally speaking, you're required, in order to keep your post license, you're required to complete 48 hours of continuing education every three years. And all of our officers exceed that by more than double every licensing cycle. So I'm happy to report that. The other thing that we have in place is we also have policies in place, some of which are mandated by the Minnesota Post Board. But in addition to that, we also have some very specific to this issue. And those are, certainly, we have impartial policing policies. We have conduct and rules policy, which is a fairly lengthy policy that discusses a conduct of officers and the rules surrounding that. And then again, we have all kinds of use of force and use of deadly force, mechanics of arrest type policies in place. Those are evaluated internally on a regular basis. They're also evaluated on an annual basis by the Minnesota Post Board and then they conduct audits as well of our policies. And the other thing is, in Minnesota, the policies set forth by the Minnesota Post Board are all the mandated policies. The Post Board provides essentially model policy versions of that. So typically, most agencies will take those model policies and utilize the majority of those as is so that they're on the same page with the Minnesota Post Board. Because there are certain requirements that just have to be met, such as training and other pieces, which I won't go into here. But so the bottom line is, there is a lot of effort and there has been for, well, a number of years. But I would say in the past few years especially, in light of several incidents that have occurred, not only in Minnesota but across the country, there has been quite a bit of change in policies and training requirements. And like I said, I think Minnesota is on the forefront of a lot of that. We're firmly quick to recognize issues and change and adapt. And I think you're, in light of this recent incident in Minneapolis, I think you're going to see additional change. Probably the turnaround time for some of that change is probably going to be faster than we've seen in the past, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. Sometimes that, it takes a long time. And I think this is moving along legislatures in the process of right now discussing some reforms, which may include things like mandated body cameras. It may include things such as citizen review boards and further involvement by the Minnesota Post Board. Currently, the Post Board is more of an oversight board and they do have some ability to enforce. But I think that's going to be expanded, their oversight and enforcement piece will likely be expanded in the future as things come forward. But those are just some ideas of what they're talking about. We don't know exactly what that will look like until they have a chance to really review that in detail. So with that, I guess I'll just open it up for any questions.
Chief, I just have a real quick question, then I'm going to hand it over to the council because I'm sure they may have some as well. But you mentioned it may be required or mandatory for cameras, body cams. Would, do you have any inkling or idea in terms of how that would affect us in terms of budget? Do you also have any idea, would the state provide any funding for those?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, that's a great question. There's been a lot of talk about this at this point. It's been a lot of speculation because the legislature just reconvened. We just don't know frankly where they're going with this. Typically, however, when you see mandates, there's typically grant dollars or some funding source associated with those types of things. Because I think they realize that to change the rules, if you will, without allowing any lead time, really puts cities at, in a tough position. So we believe that there will be some funding available. We don't know whether or not that's going to be 100% funding. Likely it won't. It would be some sort of matching funds. But at this point, it's pretty early to tell.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So council, anybody else have questions?
This is Shannon. I have a question, Chief Falls. Are we seeing any of the vandalism spread out to Minnetristo areas that have typically been in the city, but I've heard of instances coming out our way?
Yes, that's a very good question. And I think the short answer is no. We personally in our city that I'm aware of have not witnessed or had any vandalism occur related to these, the issue in Minneapolis. With that said, there have been a number of cases where it has spread out into the suburbs. Fortunately, not here. And we like to keep it that way. I think it's important to point out that there has been a tremendous amount of misinformation about threats of that type of behavior occurring out in the suburbs. And to date, we believe a lot of that was just put out there to scare cities into believing that it was coming. With that said, I don't want to give the impression that it isn't, it couldn't happen here because it certainly could. And so we've done everything we can to prepare for that, including right after this incident occurred, we did staff up with the whole Lake area just in the event that that were to happen. And given now that there's some additional incidents that have occurred since this one around the country, we're hoping that that doesn't provide any kind of motivation for this to happen again in the Minneapolis metro area. So.
Well, good. Anybody else have questions? So, yeah, I asked Chief Falls to give us this update. I know some residents had concerns. Some residents were questioning, do we have, you know, are they protected? And Chief, I know you worked with local law enforcement and Lakes area emergency management. And we did beef up our staffing levels for a few days to make sure that we had better coverage. And so, yeah, I just thought it was important that the council be updated in terms of our staff and our police department and what they do and what they have been doing in order to hopefully and avoid a situation that happened in Minneapolis here. So with that, there's no further questions. We can move on. Anybody else?
I guess I do have one other thing to say. I just want to let Chief Falls know that I think this entire council as a whole values and appreciates every single public safety officer that we have. And we support you and appreciate everything that you do, laying your lives on the line for our community. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll certainly pass that on to the rest of the staff as well. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to persons to be heard. I believe there's a couple of letters, emails that need to be shared. Just for reference, Adam, are you with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me any better now?
We can hear you. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barone.
All right. Thank you, mayor and city council. So as the mayor mentioned, there are a couple letters to read. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to read those letters and then we're going to have Mr. Gadbo. Good thing is microphone is working now. We're going to have him make a few comments on some, on email that went out to the council this afternoon. And then I'm going to finish up with a few comments of my own as well. And then we'll turn it over to the council and we'll just see if you have any comments or questions about it. So the first letter is from Tom and Cindy Notch. They live at 1250 Morningview Drive and their letter's dated June 11th. And they say, Dear Mayor Whalen and council members, we listened to the June 1, 2020 Minnetristo council meeting. We want to thank each of you for taking your time in attempting to address the topography changes and resulting surface water runoff problems of 1260 Morningview Drive on the 1250 Morningview Drive. Unfortunately, Minnetristo city staff slash WSB were flat out lying to you when Mr. Barone said they wanted to listen to whatever the council may direct us to do at your June 1, 2020 meeting. Because all they, because they all knew full well that they had already approved the site plan on the previous Thursday, May 28, 2020. If you don't believe us, you can read, review the exact site plan approval included in the following separate document for proof positive. Your time spent on this issue on June 1, 2020 was completely wasted and a charade. The Minnetristo slash WSB team all conspired to lie to you from the Minnetristo city administrator all the way down the chain of command. If you lie about little things, surface water runoff on one residence, it does not, doesn't take much imagination to wonder what else gets lied about on a bigger and bigger city business issues with the largest vendor to the city of Minnetrista. You are being played like fiddles and now you have the proof in one little incident of what went on behind the scenes. Please refer to our letter under separate cover for details too lengthy to discuss in the citizens to be heard segment. Thank you for your time and your service to the city of Minnetrista residents. Signed, Tom and Cindy Notch. The second letter I have is dated June 14th and it's from Dave and Lynn Linnay at 1260 Morningview Drive in Minnetrista. He says, We have worked with our builder McDonald Construction to come up with a site plan that meets all the city codes and ordinances. We have been very cognizant of our neighbors' concerns over proper drainage and three mature arborvitae that straddle the property line. As an example, this past week, all interested persons were able to meet and discuss. Bob McDonald, Tom Notch, and myself walked the property and discussed concerns. At this meeting, we all agreed that a small boulder retaining wall would be added around the arborvitae to provide, to protect the roots and ensure proper drainage. Mr. McDonald agreed to pay for compromise and Mr. Notch agreed to the solution. We really like the way our backyard flows to the lake. We now have a gentle elevation drop that makes the walk to the lake easy and the yard much more usable and enjoyable. Per the last city council meeting, we have an approved grading plan for our property. This plan meets city ordinances and codes. Per Adam, the city engineer, this plan will also improve the adjacent properties as stated in the last council meeting. Also stated in the last council meeting was the fact that our deck permit was being held up to force a compromise. The Notches have planted three maple trees along the property line. Although they are small today, they will grow and eventually block our views of the lake to the east. We do not like them, but said trees are on their property and therefore none of our business. What the Notches call excess fill, we call our gentle walkout. This is on our property. It meets city codes and ordinances and does not harm adjacent properties. Thank you for listening. The survey engineer was just here to confirm the as-built. We are confident this will come back to specification and we ask for the final approval to move forward, add irrigation, and finish our landscaping with sod and hopefully an approved deck plan without further delay. Signed, Dave and Lynn Linnay. So at this point, after hearing those two letters, I'm going to let Adam Gadbo talk a little bit about the email that was sent out to all concerned today. And so he could talk a little bit about the survey and the work that was done and what the ultimate result has been there. And then I have a few comments as well. Adam?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Barone. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I helped put together a figure, a PDF with a couple figures on there to describe and show anyone interested kind of what we're looking at when we see these surveys come through. And I will mention, we have a standard list of requirements that I go down for each building permit. We do, you know, somewhere around 100 a year in the city. And it's a standard process, though each lot is different, we review it against the same requirements. So what I put together in this PDF with the three different site surveys, if folks are looking at that, was I wanted to kind of easily compare what existed prior to this new building permit and this new build even starting, compare that to what was originally proposed back when the building permit was applied for and issued, and then what it looked like when it was revised after some of the communication and back and forth between the adjacent property owner, city staff, the builder, and the 1260 property owner. Just so we could all, from a simple standpoint, look at drainage patterns, as that's one of the main concerns here. So I'm going to talk through these three figures. And if anybody has any questions, you could jump in as we go. But the first one is in blue and it's the existing drainage patterns. And the arrows, I'm not going to say that they're perfect, but in general, if you were to read the contours of the survey there, you can see that's how the drainage flowed prior to a new building being constructed on this site. So it's clear that the drainage flows south and east, and it actually travels off of 1260 onto 1250 in the existing condition. So it kind of always drained that way. There is a segment, as you can see, towards the south as we get closer to the lake where it does tend to turn back. But again, not all of it turns back. Some of it continues on down 1250 and towards the lake. The second one in green is the original proposed drainage patterns, which was, I believe, in February of 2019 is when that was provided to the city as part of the permit application. And you can see, not much has changed. If you zoom in, they've got some minor grading proposed. And again, that's probably why we're talking about this for the most part is because that changed. But you can see the minor grading that they had proposed was really up next to the house. And they hadn't planned on doing much else in the yard. And so in general, the drainage kind of headed in that same direction after that first proposal. And what I'll mention is, one of the statements that we like to use when we're looking at a property that is an existing property and it's being reconstructed, that does tend to happen a lot in this town, especially along the lake. A statement we like to use and go by when we're reviewing these is, is the proposed grade consistent with the surrounding grades? And does it appear to not make drainage issue any worse for adjacent properties or not negatively affect adjacent properties? So when this one was reviewed, it didn't change the drainage patterns drastically and it was consistent with the surrounding grades. And so from that standpoint, it was deemed acceptable and the permit was issued. Then construction happened and you guys are, the council and city staff and everyone, I believe, is aware of, there was more fill on the site than anticipated, I believe, by the builder. And what they ended up doing with that is what you can see in the third diagram, which is in orange, is basically spreading that fill out onto the south of the building, onto the lot. And you can see in the dark, the dark contour lines, how that's changed the grading. We were made aware of this as city staff with Nick Olson, myself, had met on site with the builder, met on site with the neighbor, Mr. Notch, and talked through some of these things. And one of the things that we came up with right away was, well, we should do something to improve the drainage here since you've made some changes. And so the soil was added, which is noted on that last diagram. And I'll say that we have not seen an as-built survey yet. So I cannot confirm that that soil's been installed, but it will be reviewed prior to acceptance to make sure that we have that soil in there. And what the soil does is, you can see on the drainage arrows for that diagram, is it captures that runoff and directs it south. Now, it's a minor swell, but we use these on new developments all the time to make sure that drainage stays on the property line so we can avoid any drainage disputes between neighbors. And then what it does is it then turns, it turns kind of south and west and goes on towards the lake. In the front of the yard, we've also asked them to create a berm, which is doing the same thing, just in the front of the yard, is capturing some of that drainage that, if you look at the previous diagrams, used to go onto the neighboring property to the east. So next steps are, it sounds like the builder indicated they've completed the work. Their surveyor was out there. We haven't seen the survey yet. We'll review that survey. If it doesn't seem to comply with what was approved here in orange, then we'll ask them to make some changes. And really, the intent is to see a site that does not negatively affect adjacent properties. And I think I covered everything I want to cover. And I can stand for any questions. Otherwise, if Mr. Barone wanted to follow up, he's welcome to do so as well.
Mr. Barone, any additional comments?
Yeah. So I have a few comments I want to make. And then, like I said, I'll turn it over to the mayor to see if there's anybody on the council or her that would like to talk. So you all heard in my letter and seen in the letters, since you mailed it to you, emailed it to you, that the Notches, in their letter, used the word conspired and lied a number of times. So they said, we lied to you, which the city council, nature all being played like fiddles and then Minnetristo city staff and WSB engineers all conspired to lie. And if we lied about little things, imagine what else gets lied about on bigger city business issues. So a couple of points. First of all, I did not lie. So I asked Adam Gadbo to hold up the approval of the revised grading plan so we could discuss it with the city council at our June 1st meeting. My goal, and a number of people know this, were to see if there is a way that we could broker a compromise, so to speak, or a solution whereby not as much fill would be left on the Linnay property. So at that point in time, I'd only heard the Notch side of the story. And I did interject myself into this discussion. I generally don't. But I did want to make sure that the Notch's side of the story was heard. So when I did get a chance to talk with Bob McDonald on the first, I was asking him about a possible compromise. That was my goal all along. And he wasn't interested. He said that throughout the process of constructing, constructing the Linnay home, it was pointed out to him repeatedly by Mr. Notch what he was doing wrong and what wasn't up to specifications, what wasn't up to code. And he pretty much said he didn't want to have, didn't feel as if there needed to be any compromise at all with Mr. Notch based on the number of complaints that he kept bringing towards Mr. McDonald and his construction. And then the second point I wanted to make is, so for whatever reason, I know Mr. Notch doesn't particularly like WSB engineering. I've heard him speak about this in the past. He's also talked about some sort of conspiracy between city staff and WSB for many years. I've been at the city of Minnetristo 11-plus years now and I remember these exact same talking points, different topic, but same, same talking points made by him back when Mike Funk was our city administrator. So this isn't really new ground. The council, you know, you paid me a very nice wage to be my administrator, your administrator. And we have a lot of very dedicated and hard-working staff as well. And we don't have any reason, financial or otherwise, to conspire or lie about anything we do, including our work with WSBers. Nothing that I'm beholden to with WSB. We don't, on city staff, owe them anything. They are just our engineering firm. So all the projects we work on with WSB, they all come through for approval by the city council. All our payments to WSB as well as all our other vendors are all placed on the consent agenda. agenda, under claims for approval by the city council. We bring forward all our budgets each year for approval by the council, and our city finances get audited and reviewed by an independent auditor each year, which also gets presented and approved by the city council. There are so many checks and balances that are in place, so we make sure that we spend city funds in the most appropriate way possible with the approval of the council. So there isn't really any conspiracy here, there just isn't. So when I see insinuations like the one that the Notches are sending to the city council, ripping me and other members of city staff, and WSB for that matter, I take objection to that, as it reflects on my integrity and the integrity of our staff, and it's just not appreciated. So with that, mayor and council, I will turn it over to you for any questions or concerns you may have on this topic for any of us that are on the phone tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brony. Council, any questions or comments for staff or otherwise?
This is Shannon Bruce, and I have a question for Mr. Gadbo. Did you receive the email from Mr. Notch this afternoon, subsequent to the emails that were sent to city council?
Yes, I have.
Okay, I believe he copied city council on that too, and in his email, you mentioned that you thought that the work had already been done, but he mentioned there that the swell is still not in place, as indicated in that orange picture. And I just want to make, you mentioned that you would be reviewing that, but I just wanted to point that out, that that may be one of the reasons why he's not happy, is because that has been signed off on, and that's still not done. And at this point too, I don't think it's, I don't think Mr. Notch is expecting the city to do anything different. I think clearly the diagrams show that the property is probably actually better off than it was before. I think he's calling attention to some things that he sees as just not being straightforward, like when Mr. Brony said that he was holding up the approval for, until June 1, when it had already been signed off on, on May 28, and letting Mr. Notch think that the council might have some impact on the approval when it had already been done. I think that's what he's objecting to, and I'm not surprised that the contractor wasn't interested in making any accommodations, because it had already been approved. So those kinds of, and I don't, I don't believe that anybody's buying anybody off, or, you know, some of the allegations are over the top. But I think we just need to take care, not to, we just need to take care and do things the right way and in the right order, and not lead someone to believe something that isn't true.
This is David, Madam Mayor and Council. This is David. If I could just say something quick, just for clarification, so the homeowner said in his letter that the grading work was complete. Adam has never said that, and Adam has not reviewed it yet. He said, "We have not gotten an as-built survey yet," so Adam has not been out there to review it, nor has he said it's been completed. That came from the homeowner, just for a point of clarification. So Adam still will get out there, he still will review that. And Mike, I thought, if my memory serves me correct, was pretty clear in saying and explaining at the June 1 meeting what was going on, we were looking from direction from council. If council would have gave us directions to do something different, obviously, we would have followed through with that. That was the point of bringing that discussion to council, because we were getting nowhere between the two homeowners, and this subject had already been talked about several times at the council meeting. So just a couple of points for clarification there.
Thank you, David. Staff, so anybody else have any comments? All right, hearing none, I don't believe that staff lied to the council. I think Ms. Bruce, you stated that I think some of the allegations that Mr. Notch made are kind of over the top, not kind of, but sort of are over the top. I do think our staff works really hard to work with people, and I do know that they try to make sure that Mr. Notch was, his concerns were addressed. So to David's point, Mr. Abel's point, staff has not been out to review the final grading. I'm sure they'll do that. And staff, what do you need from council at this point?
Mayor and council, I'm not sure if we actually need anything from you. I mean, we're just following through on our persons-to-be-heard protocol with the reading of the two letters. I know there's still a little bit of work, it sounds like, that needs to be done out at the new home site for the Lanays by Adam and in their review, but other than that, I don't think there's anything that I think we specifically ask you, or need to ask you tonight, to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, are there any other? Yep?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Molitor. I drove past the site today, and I do have one question, this is probably directed to maybe David, but not sure if you have the answer on this, but I noticed that the new home does not have any rain gutters on it, and obviously, you know, water coming out of a house roof is going to have an impact on drainage. Do we know if there are plans to install a gutter system, and if so, where and how that would drain out?
Mr. Molitor, no, we do not know that. That is not a permitted activity, nor is it rarely shown on building plans. That's something that, you know, usually would come after the fact, and we would certainly, in most cases, not even know if they put one on or not, because it's not a building code requirement nor a permitted activity. And further, we do not have any, as you may recall, council, when we've talked about some pump discharges, we kind of got into this topic. There is no ordinance or regulations that involve where you discharge your rain gutter. So there are no rules pertaining to that written in our ordinances right now. So I do not know if they're installing them or not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and council, any other questions of staff? All right, with that then, that concludes our persons-to-be-heard, and we'll move on to our consent agenda items. There's quite a few here. Are there any that you wish to remove?
Shannon Bruce here, I have four to remove. A, the work session meeting minutes, E, approved claims, J, arbitrage services, and the K, our COVID-19 preparedness plan.
Okay, are there any others? Hearing none, and we will be approving consent agenda B, approve the city council regular meeting minutes from June 1, 2020. C is summary of our closed session meeting from June 1, 2020. D is approve our closed session meeting minutes from June 1, 2020. F is a resolution to approve a step increase for Mark Klein, public works maintenance worker. And G is a step increase for Randy Storm, a lead public works maintenance worker. And H is a resolution, again, another step increase for Chris Stanberg, also with our public works maintenance worker. And I is accept a quote and award contract for the Lyle Park shelter, and that would be it. Is there a motion to approve items B, C, D, F, G, H, I, and I? This is Pam.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Trump, Pam made the motion, and Mr. Trumperland seconded that. Is that okay?
Okay.
So I'll go down, thank you, I'll go down the line. Pam, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mike Molitor?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Shannon?
Yes.
And I vote yes, Lisa Whelan, so vote passes 5-0. Ms. Bruce, you asked for the work session meeting minutes from June 1 to be removed.
Yes, and just a minor thing, on page six of the packet, under, let's see, page six, just before adjourning, there's a paragraph about the HOAs. And I think we had decided to, we had decided to reduce the index number, from 75 to 65, and I think that should be reflected in the minutes at the meeting that we did that?
It is.
Where is it?
Go up there.
Oh, you know what, I just.
34.
Well, it says there was.
From 75 to 65.
But it wasn't clear, and it said, "Or even low, as low as 60," so that's not clear. I think we decided, or did we decide? I thought we decided on 65.
I think it would be fine to just say that discussion was had between 60 and 65, and the council determined 65. How's that?
That would be fine.
Okay, are the rest of you?
And then.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and John, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, and Mike?
Yes.
All right, all right. Anything else?
And then, the other change, yes, the other change was that same paragraph. It says to research providers and provide it to the HOAs. I think we decided not to research providers and provide it to the HOAs. I think what we decided was to provide HOAs with a strategy to search for contractors, but not to provide a list. Because I think we talked about not providing providers, there's a danger of providing providers to the HOAs, and I think we decided against that.
I'm not sure. I think we discussed, my recollection was that we discussed whether to provide them with names, and we discussed the fact that we wouldn't make any recommendations because of that fact that you stated. But I don't recall that we said we wouldn't provide names. So Ms. Lindquist, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, why don't we just leave this one off for consent for right now? I'll go back and re-listen to the tape and bring it back at the next meeting for approval.
Okay, yeah, I think, just to make it clear and make it what was discussed, I think that might be a good idea. So.
I think when, when you provide names, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I think when you provide names, that's an implied recommendation. So if you give someone a list, it's an implied recommendation, that's what I'm saying.
Ms. Bruce, it doesn't matter what you think here to do. I'm going to let Mr. Molitor speak, and then we're going to bring the minutes back as to what was actually said. So, Mr. Molitor?
Two things, I do recall that discussion about a strategy, but we'll get that confirmed with the tape, as you mentioned. On this, I just want to be clear, the direction to staff to send out informational letters to the HOAs and property owners, help me remember here, but I thought we were, we as a council, were going to review those before they actually went out. Is that just my wishful thinking, or was that what we actually discussed?
Madam Mayor?
And maybe, if you can confirm that, that would be great.
Madam Mayor, this is Allison. That was my recollection as well, what Councilmember Molitor had just recalled. That's what I had in my notes as well, was to bring the letter back to the council, and I can work with Ms. Lindquist with regards to the minute, the recordings, to ensure that that, my recollection, is consistent with what's on the recording.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, Mr. Molitor.
Mayor and Council, for whatever it's worth, this is Mike. I wrote down the phrase that we would provide search terms for both inspections and excavations, but not recommendations or a list. That's the, I think we decided that providing a actual list would be the slippery slope that we don't want to look like we're favoring one business over another.
Yeah.
That's what Councilmember Bruce is referring to.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I recall that we talked about it, and so, just to make sure, I believe that's correct, but just to make sure, let's bring it back at our next meeting for approval. I do think that's correct, but just to make sure. So let's move on to approve our claims. Ms. Bruce?
Yes, on page 21, the first item is the CAFR award submission for $460, and I'm, you know, I just want to say, I appreciate the great job that Mr. Grimm does, and I'm not questioning whether he deserves this award or not, he does a great job. But I'm questioning, how does this award benefit the residents of Minatrista? And should we be spending money on getting an award? I just, that, I just don't get that. So I'm questioning that expenditure.
I could probably clarify where I think the benefit comes from, and I really, the award or the plaque, I mean, I guess I could toss off the window as far as I'm concerned, but, I mean, it is, if you look at all the statistical tables in the back of the, I mean, it's 20, 30, 40-some pages of documents that, that's a lot more transparent on our financial information that a lot of other cities choose not to provide, a lot of those 10-year statistical trends and some different things that are part of the CAFR award. At least I find some value, and if someone really wants to read about the city's finances, there's some good requirements of getting the CAFR award that can be beneficial for citizens to read through. So that's my two cents.
Council, anybody else have a comment?
This is Councilmember Molitor. I would add that from a bond rating perspective, it probably doesn't hurt to have that as well. So just, you know, if it was a much larger figure, it might be more inclined, but I think for the money that's being spent, it's probably worth the expenditure.
Well, and that was my question, and that's good feedback. If there's a value to our residents, and if that translates into bonding deals that are better, then that's fine. Okay.
Wait, do you have other questions on that claim?
That was the only one I had.
All right, so is there a motion then to approve the claims as presented?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, it's Pam.
All right, so a motion was made by Ms. Bruce, and seconded by Ms. Mortensen, to approve claims as presented. All those in favor signify with aye. Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I, Lisa Whelan, mayor, I vote aye, so that's 5-0. And then you had a, Ms. Bruce, you said approve the arbitrage services?
Yes, on page 42, Mr. Grimm and I had a conversation about this this morning, about how this works, and there's, on page 42, in that top paragraph, it says, the second line, "The issuer must inform elders in writing if they do not want elders to provide arbitrage services on any currently outstanding and/or future individual obligations." And Mr. Grimm indicated that that's really not how it works, that he usually just says, "We want you to do this one," and it's on a schedule, and, but nevertheless, it says, "The issuer must inform." And so, we talked about, and Mr. Grimm seemed open to just deleting that sentence, because when I see that an issuer must do- because when I, when I see that an issuer must do something, it means they must, and since we're not doing that, I think that needs to be removed.
Yep, and I, yeah, we, I do agree, that's, that's fine to take out, and I've spoken with the vendor too, that it's not, really, we've just been adopting it based on that chart that's further down in the item, based on individual, um, discussions and needs. So, it's, um, that, that they agreed, and that sentence should come out, or can, can come out and should come out.
Okay. Was that the only issue?
Yes.
All right.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Bruce, what page is that on? You said forty-two?
Forty-two.
Okay, 'cause I, in the first paragraph, I guess I'm having, I'm having a hard time locating it. So, it's in the-
It's the latter part of the, that first sentence.
Read that.
There, there are only two sentences.
It's-
Oh, I see where it is now. The issuer must inform. Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right.
That's all I have.
So, um, thank you. So, we have, um, a motion then to, um, or I need a motion to approve the arbitrage services resolution, um, with that one change. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Trumperland. All those in favor signify with aye. Um, anybody else have comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Mr. Molitor, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Ms., Ms. Mortensen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Can I vote aye? That's five oh. So, and we'll move on to then this, adopt the City of Minatrista COVID-19 Preparedness Plan. Um, Ms. Bruce, you have some questions on that?
Um, not necessarily questions, but I, I had a discussion with Mr. Baroni about this, this morning. And I'd like to suggest that we put an expiration date on this plan, so that it, just like the emergency, uh, plan, or the emergency order, um, it doesn't go on forever. These, these obviously aren't, um, plans that we intend to, to, to take forever. And what I was going to suggest is to put an expiration date on this, maybe thirty days out, and then, if that's acceptable, then just put it on the consent agenda, uh, um, in our meeting, every, at, at every council meeting, put it on the consent agenda, and if, at any time, uh, we don't want it to continue, just pull it off and vote on it.
Or likewise, we could, uh, bring it up and, and, uh, vote on it and remove it at any time.
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Bruce.
Or likewise, we could bring it up at any time and remove it. But, um, let, let me have Mr. Baroni jump in here real quick. Mr. Baroni?
Yeah, we, uh, Councilmember Bruce and I did have a talk about it. So, my, my strategy on this was, I thought, you know, if you go every other council meeting, you're basically talking thirty days. Um, I thought that was a little too short of a timeframe. I'm, I suggested to Ms. Bruce, maybe quarterly. Um, I, just from what I see, and I think what everybody else sees in the news, is that, I don't even know if the first wave is over before the peak comes, or the second wave, or what. I mean, this is gonna go on for quite a while, I believe, though. We're gonna be dealing with COVID, and pretty much until we have, you know, some sort of vaccination for people, so you, you know, can be hold, hopefully, rest assured you can't get it. But, um, so I think this new normal, when we get around to potentially reopening City Hall the next few weeks, I think that's gonna be our new reality, where we're gonna have Plexiglas up, and we're gonna have, uh, people wearing masks, both internally and visitors. Um, and we're gonna be hav- having six-foot social distance and not having people use our bathrooms, uh, marking those off limits. So I don't think that's gonna change anytime soon. It could be twenty-twenty-one. I mean, I hope it's sooner, but I got a feeling it's not. So my, my, uh, suggestion to Ms. Bruce was, maybe quarterly is the way to go. We're finishing up here the second quarter, essentially with this meeting, which that takes us through the end of June. Um, we could bring it up in, I don't know, July, August, September, I guess, the end of the third quarter, and see where we're at. If, if, uh, things are way improved, we, we can, uh, have, at a meeting, say, let's put it on the agenda to discuss it the next meeting, 'cause it seems to be getting better, and then we'll go from there. But I think every thirty days, I understand the, the, the reason for it, I get that. Uh, but, um, I think it might be just too much, uh, too often to do this, but I understand the concept.
And I'm, I'm not sure that the, the timeframe i- is even relevant, because if it's on the consent agenda to continue it, it's gonna continue. So, whether it's in thirty days, or quarterly, or whatever it is, I, I would just like it to be on the consent agenda, so that we either are consciously extending it, or, um, voting to have it expire.
Well, then, let's put it on the agenda every quarter. So, that would make it sometime September. So the next, um, the end of September, second meeting in September, or else the first meeting, whatever is, you know, close to the quarter. Okay, does everybody else agree?
It's acceptable.
Okay.
So, if, if I understand this correctly, the way we would proceed here is that we would say, this plan expires at the end of the third quarter of twenty-twenty, and then, our plan would be at the last, at the second meeting in September, it would come on the consent agenda, again, to have it extend through the end of twenty-twenty, and then we vote up or down at that point. Is that a fair understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we could definitely, you know, the plan is the plan, and we could structure an item for the council packet, whereby it says, this, this, uh, unless extended, this, this preparedness plan will end as a blankety-blank date of the council meeting. So, um, it's up to you, if it's on there, you pass it, it extends, if you pull it and say, let's, let's get rid of it, and you do that, so.
Um, but, Mr. Baroni, um, we have to have, okay, isn't it required by the state that we have a plan?
Yep, and that's what we're doing tonight. We're getting it, uh, approved, so.
So what I'm saying is-
I don't know if there's an expiration by the state, so.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, we may not have the authority to re, let's just say, come end of September, we may not have the authority to let it lapse and not extend it. I mean, we may have to extend it if the state determines, or has, uh, made a determination that we need to keep it in place.
And you very, very well may be right, Mayor, and we'll certainly, um, address that, I think. But if the council's really interested in doing that, if we can, uh, have it expire, and the council wants to have it expire, we can bring it back at the, uh, at a meet, the one, the last meeting in September, and we'll just see what the council wishes to do.
Okay, all right.
We'll try to do some work ahead of that, so.
Yeah, right, obviously. All right, so, um, with that, um, is there then a motion to adopt the City of Minatrista COVID-19 Pre- Preparedness Plan? Um, having it, I don't even want to say expire, but having the council review it again the end of, or our second meeting in September. The only reason I'm hesitant to say having it expire, because if we do that, and the state says, then, oh, you're not compliant because you can't have an expiration date on it. That's my only concern. So my, my suggestion might be, is that we bring it back, um, under consent agenda, um, with information our second week in September. If the state allows cities to expire them, we can then have that discussion. But if not, we can just have it on consent agenda and just move on.
I would rather have it expire, and I think, I, I don't think there are any, um, I, I know there's a, a mandate that, that, a requirement that the city must adopt, a pa- a plan, but it doesn't say that it has to continue for a specified period of time. It just says you must have a plan. And I, I think the council is capable of reviewing whatever requirements happen to be in place when it comes time to extend it or not. And I don't have any problem with setting an expiration date. And then, if it, if we determine that it's not appropriate to, to have it expire, then we'll just extend it.
Okay, counsel?
This is Councilmember Molitor, I agree with that.
Hey, Ms., um, anybody else want to, Ms. Mortensen, Mr. Trumperland?
No, I'm good with that as well.
All right.
That's fine.
So, all right, so, uh, Ms. Bruce, then you can make the motion.
Um, I make the motion to approve the Preparedness Plan with the, uh, stipulation that it expires quarterly, and that it will be put on the consent agenda to be extended, um, quarterly.
Can you put a-
I'll second that motion.
All right. Um, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Molitor. Can you put a date on that, so that we're all clear? Like, um, end of September, September thirtieth versus quarterly, just so that it's very clear?
Let's say September first.
September first doesn't do it, because that's only sixty days.
Our meeting, um, September is September twenty-first.
Okay, let's say September twenty-first.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Mr. Molitor?
Yes.
All right. All right, then, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye. Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And Ma-, um, Lisa Whelan, Mayor, I say aye. So, motion passes five oh. So we'll move on then, under, that concludes our consent agenda items. So we'll move on to our, uh, business items. Our first item is approving the recycling services contract with Waste Management, uh, for September first, twenty-twenty through August thirty-first, twenty-five. Mr. Baroni?
Um, I'm gonna hand this off to Mr. Grimm to kind of review this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grimm?
All right, yes, Madam Mayor and counsel, so this, um, packet starts on, uh, page fifty-eight of your packet. So, um, as we, um, had our work session discussion at, uh, the May fourth meeting, um, everyone's aware that our recycling contract with Waste Management expires in August of this year. And we had a, at that work session, we, uh, had brought information, um, from the vendor for a five-year contract. Um, and as you can see in the packet materials, and, and as we reviewed back in, uh, in May, at that May meeting, um, there's basically a, a market adjustment in that first year based on the current market conditions in really the recycling sector. And then after that first year, the average increase is about four percent a year for the remainder of the term through August of two thousand twenty-five. And that was, that's in, uh, exhibit B of the attached contract, I think it's on page, uh, sixty-four, sixty-five. Um, just for some background, so the city, uh, did go up for an RFP in two thousand twelve for recycling services, and then extended with Waste Management in two thousand fifteen for the most recent five-year contract. And then, overall, the city's been happy with, uh, Waste Management terms of the price, as well as the customer service for the residents, um, of the City of Minatrista. And from the research, uh, of that May fourth meeting, we found that, uh, the rates quoted were, seemed very competitive. There was, you know, spreadsheets and analysis provided as far as some neighboring cities and other vendors and stuff. And it seemed, uh, Waste Management's, uh, price seemed very, um, competitive when analyzing that research. Um, one of the items we talked about that, um, evening was, uh, organics. And, um, for now, we basically decided to take organics, it's not in the current contract language that you see. Um, you know, we did find out that, um, as a city under ten thousand in population, we are not required to do anything until January first of two thousand twenty-two. Um, we talked about, you know, a drop site, or maybe having the ordinance where the garbage haulers provide the organic services. And I think those are all items we can talk about, um, further in, um, as we go in the rest of this year in twenty twenty-one. That gets closer, 'cause I'm, from doing some follow-up with the county, they're not even sure past twenty-twenty-one how they're gonna allocate the grant money for organics. So, a lot of that is still to be determined, um, also. So, um, Jason Hartman is, uh, from Waste Management's on the, the call tonight, too, in case there's any questions for him. But otherwise, um, we'd just be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the agreement with Waste Management for recycling services for the, the five-year term as stated in the, um, in the packet there. I'll stand for any questions, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions on Mr. Grimm, or Mr. Hartman?
This is Shannon Bruce. Um, I, I have a couple of comments. In the memo to, to counsel, where, where the second sentence, it says, "After a market adjustment in the first year", it, I think it's relevant to say how much of a market adjustment in the first year there was, because it was forty-one percent. And I, I think leaving that out is, is egregious, that you didn't include that in the memo. This, this memo is what the public sees, and not putting in the fact that the market adjustment in the first year of this contract is a forty-one percent increase, I, I, I take exception with that. And I'm not gonna approve this, because I think this contract needs to go out for an RFP. And I, I think when you start hiding things about this contract from the public like this, it's, it's inexcusable.
What's the dollar amount, Ms. Bruce?
I don't have the contract in front of me, I don't know. It's, it's forty-one percent. And this was from the work session. We, we looked at that at the work session.
I understand. Um, I'm just saying, what is the dollar amount difference? What is the difference between the dollar amount?
You know, I, I know, I know where this is going. Well, you asked me, I'm answering you. I know where this is going, because you're gonna say that the dollar amount is very small. We talk about dollar amounts that are very small all the time. And those small dollar amounts, time after time, whether it's, you know, water fees, or sewer fees, or, uh, Waste Management fees, or whatever it is, those add up, and I do not accept the, the argument that just because it's a small dollar amount, it, it shouldn't matter. A forty-one percent increase is huge. I don't care what the dollar amount is.
Right. Okay. I asked a question, simple question. I didn't state that it was a small amount. I simply asked the question, what is the dollar difference? What is the dollar amount? And you said you don't know.
The dollar amount is irrelevant.
Let me, let me, okay, you say it's irrelevant. All right, so moving on, anybody else have comments? Okay, so, um, obviously, we know that, um, Ms. Bruce is opposed to this. Um, anybody else, um, opposed to the contract? Questions, comments? All right, then, is there a motion to approve the recycling services contract with Waste Management for September one, twenty-twenty through August thirty-one, twenty-five?
John T., so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Pam.
All right, so Mr. Trumperland made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any further questions?
Uh, this is-
I would just like to add one comment. Um, for anybody that is interested, there was very, very good conversation, uh, at the May fourth meeting regarding this whole topic, and I would encourage people to go back and listen to all the arguments if they, um, you know, are interested in analyzing this, because it was good, it was, uh, uh, I think the vote, uh, was for one, and, um, I think all the, um, arguments were justified.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland, you want to just make a comment?
Uh, no, my only comment, obviously, is when I get to budgeting, it's going to be trying to crunch the numbers for the recycle fund.
Right, and, um, that was part of our discussion, I believe, at the, um, May 4th, I think it was the work session. Um, so, yeah, we'll have to be looking at that. And in, we knew an increase was coming since an increase hadn't occurred for many years, so, um, that was no surprise. All right, so with that, um, all those in favor signify with aye. Um, Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
Ms., uh, Mortenson?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
I'm gonna vote no, and I'd like the ministry to reflect the reason I'm voting no, is because the, because the app, that, because the market adjustment in the first year was not included in the memo, and I believe that this contract needs to go out for an RFP. I'm voting no.
Okay. All right. And I will vote, um, aye, so motion passes for all. Bruce dissenting. So we'll move on to, um, approve our plans and specifications and authorize request for quotes for the 2020 sewer lining project. I believe that's Ms. Fowski or Mr. Gabois, which-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Adam. I can take that item.
All right, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. So, um, this is in regards to the 2020 sewer lining project, City Project 05-20. Each year, the city, um, televises segments of the sanitary sewer and storm sewer infrastructure, and we're looking for info, inflow and infiltration issues, broken or deformed pipes, or other structural or operational concerns within those pipes that are televised. And then these televising tapes help us produce a, a priority list for repairs. Um, so we've got a priority list for this year's project, and those items are included in the plans and specifications for the 2020 sewer lining project. And in general, the main, uh, improvement is, that's proposed, is installing cured-in-place pipe. It's a structural liner that goes right inside the existing pipe. It can be done without excavation, and it provides essentially a pipe within a pipe and is, um, a, a quick and easy way to, uh, repair structurally deficient, uh, pipe within the city. Um, the city of Minutrista has used this process on, on many other city projects in the past, and, um, while we're out there, we're gonna repair a couple manholes that were identified to have some deficiencies, and, um, help with a couple storm sewer outlets that outlet in Oxy Oak Lake as we line those storm sewer pipes. So, um, the quote package has been prepared. The contract is going to be a working day contract, and we're, actually, I was speaking with contractors today, um, just gauging interest on whether or not they'd like to provide quotes. And, uh, after discussions, we're gonna switch that completion date to the end of the year and, in hopes to just get some better unit pricing, and so, um, that will have to be corrected, uh, cri- mislinkwist, uh, to December 30th or 31st. But really, that's just gonna allow a wide range from now where we're in June, and we're gonna pass this out to contractors for quotes. Uh, it gives them a wide range to kind of fit this in their schedule and hopefully get good prices for the, uh, unit price work. Um, so we recommend approving the plans and specifications, which are included in the packet. Um, after looking closely at the repairs needed, the estimated construction cost of the repairs is about 113,000, and that includes a, a 5% contingency. Um, some of the work, as, as, um, people who are familiar with the city know, we have sewer lines that kind of run adjacent to the lake, and so they don't have easy access from the street necessarily. Um, so we're including a contingency in there, and, um, we're thinking we might see some higher prices just because of the access restrictions, um, but hopefully that's, um, included within that contingency. The project will be financed from the sanitary sewer fund and storm sewer fund, and I'll stand for any questions, uh, specific to the project.
Thank you, Adam. Um, counsel, do you have any questions? All right, um, hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the request for quotes for the 2020 sewer lining project with that change of completion to December 31st?
This is Shannon again, and, um, you know, what, once again, we have 177 pages of engineering plans and specifications that haven't been reviewed by anyone without a financial interest in this project. And I, these keep coming up and keep coming up, and I, I know there's nobody on staff, nobody on the council that has read 177 pages of this, um, this, these plans and specifications that we're approving, and I'm sorry, I can't, I can't approve them, because we don't have anyone that has reviewed them.
If I-
So I'll be voting no.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, um, much of the project, much of the project manual, uh, are appendices, and one of the larger ones is actually, uh, uh, the City Engineers' Association of Minnesota standard specifications, which is a standard document we include in our project manuals, and that covers, um, generally accepted engineering practices for construction, materials, how work should take place, and it, it's created by an association, the City Engineers' Association of Minne- of Minnesota, and, and we include that. That right there is 84 pages. Um, and, and we do do internal reviews with Public Works Department, um, and, you know, I'd be happy if anyone did review it, if they wanted to ask any questions or, um, um, need any further clarification on what's included in that package, I'd be happy to include that or discuss that with anybody.
I, I wanna make clear that I'm not implying that WSB has done anything improper. I, I've just, I, I can't approve something that, when we don't have an independent, um, engineer that has, that doesn't have a financial stake in the project reviewing this. So I, I don't think there's anything you can point to that's gonna change my mind, but, um, so we can move on.
Madam Mayor, counsel, it's Gary. May I have a quick minute?
Yes, please, Gary, go ahead.
Um, what, most of the documentation-
Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, most of the documentation, like Adam said, is a lot of the, you know, min dot mumble jumble, but the, the actual photos, the li- the lining areas, what's the trouble spots, comes from me. I personally review, and it sounds stupid, but I personally review all the incoming information from our vendor who does all our videoing, and they put a extensive list together of bad areas that they see, so you can call the middleman and not look at every section of pipe, but they do have a list of the bad stuff, where the cracks, where the breaks, where the leaking's coming in. So I do review all that. I get all this together, I make copies of the report that they give me, um, I submit them both to Allison and Adam to discuss, and then they go forth with that. So it has been reviewed, so I mean, it's not just something willy-nilly that they're doing. I do personally look at all this, because we get this information, um, we, we video, uh, we had four sections of the sewers, and we video them every, well, it'd be, basically now, it's gonna be every five to six years that we do a video of them, um, as per statute that we're supposed to do. So they are reviewed by me, I look through, I make the list, I make the determination of which ones that we should look at, which ones we should do to go up for bid. As far as the storm sewers still, um, same thing, these are ones that are chronic problems, um, the ones on, um, um, Oxy Oak, I, I had that video because we were working on the street, and no one thought to look at the, not only the outfalls, but the piping. So from now on with these projects, we'll be looking at, in, in the future, hey, let's look at what's downstream as well as what's happening in the street. Um, the one that's on Morning View, that one's been on, we've repaired that, since I've been here, three or four times, we've had holes in the pipe there, and, uh, it runs between the two properties there, uh, on Morning View, and it's, it's in need of lining, the same thing with the one in Loring. So we've all had these videos, they've been on the list to have done, so, um, you know, it's not just, uh, I, I'm not trying to say, I mean, it's not just something that we just pull out of the thin air. There is definite, uh, means to our, to our strategy to do these.
And I'm not questioning that the work needs, I'm not questioning whether the work needs to be done, I'm questioning that we haven't had an engineer review it.
Um, well, excuse me, but Adam is an engineer, and Allison Fowski is an engineer, and I believe Allison has reviewed it as well. Ms. Fowski, do you wanna weigh in?
Yes, Madam-
She doesn't, I, I was an engineer without a financial interest in the project. I needed to be cl- just clear about that.
Okay.
I, I, I know, I know Allison and Adam have reviewed it.
Okay, but I'm, I'm concerned about what you're saying. You're saying without a financial interest in the project, but the people that are doing the work would have the financial interest in the project? And they're not gonna be doing the work?
They're, they're supervising the work, and they're, they, they, they did the plans and specifications and authorization, and they're, they're getting paid from this project. There, there are payments going to WSB associated with this project.
So you're saying we should pay two people? We should pay an engineer to review it, and an engineer to do, to do the plans and specifications?
No, I've been advocating, I, I've been advocating that the city needs its own city engineer and to do this, and I, I think the money that we would save by competitively bidding these projects that WSB does, um, would, would more than pay for, uh, a city engineer of our own. I think we're getting to the size where we need to consider that, and, um, this is a perfect example.
All right. Okay, counsel, do you have any other questions?
Uh, this is Councilmember Molitor. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will say, I actually did read all the 177 some pages, um, I did not find any issue. Um, I've also had the opportunity to sit in the truck and actually watch the videos, uh, when this happened, not this particular one, but in general. Um, so I, I've seen exactly what the filming happening and what they're looking for, um, and, and so I definitely understand what we're doing here, um, and I, I don't have an issue with it. Uh, the approximately 100,000, obviously, is what we budget for from a CIP improvement perspective every year. Um, this money will actually go out to whoever, you know, comes in as the bidder on the project. Um, we've asked WSB to put together these specs, as somebody needs to, um, and they've done that, um, and I think, uh, I'm comfortable with what they've put together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molitor. Anybody else? All right, um, with that, then, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, this is Gary. I just may add, I mean, not only is this, you know, the, the money saving that's gonna come into place here is twofold, because, um, with the INI control that we're doing in the, uh, sanitary sewers, um, we'll be saving money as far as not having to pay for that water coming through, so we'll be saving money that way, uh, but also, we do not get a surcharge, um, from the Met Council, because we are doing such a, a good job of INI. So I mean, it is, we will be getting some payback here. We're saving money not only, um, by not getting surcharges, but we are also gonna be saving money in the long run, because we will not be processing, you know, having to process, uh, or move, um, getting billed for clean water coming in. So I mean, there will be substantial savings, so I mean, in, in the long run, it's hard to determine how much, but we will be saving money. I just wanted to throw that in there, too.
Yep, thank you. Plus, we save money, um, if our sewer lines don't break, you know, it's a lot easier to fix them, be proactive rather than reactive, so, um, all those reasons. Thank you, Gary. All right, so again, I'm gonna ask, um, any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 0692020? That would be approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the request for quotes for the 2020 sewer lining project, extending the date to December, completion date to December 31st.
So moved. Councilmember Molitor.
Okay, Mr. Molitor made that motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
This is Pam. I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made that second. All those in favor signify with aye. I will vote aye, Lisa Whalen. And Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
Ms. Trumperland, Mr. Trumperland, sorry.
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Ms. Bruce?
I just wanna say that I, I'm not questioning that this project needs to be done, I'm questioning the reviewing process of the city, and that's why I'm voting no, and I'd like that reflected in a minute.
Okay, so the motion passes for all. We'll move on to approve plans and specifications, authorize request for quotes for the street overlay project. Um, that would be for, um, Dream Farm, Circle, Retreat, and Sterling, I believe. Ms. Fowski or Mr. or Adam, which one? Allison or Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take that one as well, Adam here. Um, and you just mentioned the streets, so, yeah, Public Works and engineering staff work together to identify some streets, um, that are gonna be good candidates for a bit. Um, have been having discussions for quite some time about, um, you know, providing some maintenance on these streets that's going to limit the, uh, effort that Public Works do each road, providing patching and, um, patching throughout the roadways that, you know, tends to bust apart and, um, wash away. And so the thought has been to, um, identify a, a few streets that could receive a full bituminous overlay, um, which would be kind of a more concentrated maintenance effort that extends the useful service life of the roadways, um, and again, limit that expense of coming back and patching it, um, season after season. Um, another benefit of adding the overlay, um, which is, uh, again, a maintenance effort, would be that when, when the city does choose to go back and reconstruct these streets in the future, there's gonna be more bituminous material to generate a reclaimed Class 5, which has been our method of reconstructing streets. Uh, it's used, uh, in many of the metro area cities, and I'm sure throughout Minnesota. Um, and so there will be more pavement and more Class 5 generated in the future, um, to reconstruct those streets, and again, this is a maintenance effort. And, um, two of the streets indicated are rural sections, and so they'll just, um, receive some sweeping, putting tack oil down, and then, um, milling that dry ice to match in, and then an inch and a half bituminous overlay. And Retreat Circle does have curb and gutter, and so in order to perform an overlay there, um, we do need to edge mill at that curb and gutter so that we can meet in, uh, into that curb elevation, and so a little bit more work over on Retreat Circle. Um, and then shortly after these are overlaid, we will have to come back with a crack sealing project, which we tend to do here at the city each year, and so we'll come back and perform crack sealing on those streets. Uh, we will get reflective cracking through there, but if we seal those up, um, it does prevent the water from infiltrating in between that layer of new pavement and the existing pavement that's there, um, and it's gonna provide just a really good, um, uh, I guess, ma- uh, maintenance project for these streets. So the quote package, again, has been prepared. We're again going with the process of allowing for a, a working day contract, because there's no urgency to get these, uh, done, you know, in the next month, we're gonna allow for an open schedule, um, so that bidders find these a little bit more attractive, and hopefully we receive more competitive bids. Uh, we do have a completion date of September 15th, however, we don't want to get too late into the season for paving and, and have to worry about cold weather paving. Um, so we do recommend approving the plans and specifications. The estimated construction cost at this time is 136,000 approximately, with, which also includes a 5% contingency, and the project is proposed to be financed by the Road Maintenance Fund. Uh, again, I'll stand for any questions on the overlay project.
Thank you, Adam. Um, any questions by counsel regarding the project itself?
This is John T. Just a question on the, uh, cover letter, we make reference to maximum 10-day work duration. So is that saying, is that a 10 consecutive, uh, workdays once they start the first day, or is that just total of 10 days?
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. The, the idea there is, once they get started, they have 10 days to complete the work, and, you know, the contract quantity is, um, I believe about eight, 1,800 tons of mix, and they should have no problem completing that in a few days, um, but- And, you know, the contract quantity is, um, I believe about eight, eighteen hundred tons of mix. And they should have no problem completing that in a few days. Um, but we just would like for the residents that live there, for the work to commence and then get done quickly and wrapped up and for them to mobilize out of there. And so that's really the intent there. But it, it would be ten consecutive days. So, um, not working, not, um, you know, they can't start it and then take a break and not have those days counted, if that answers your question.
So is that a Monday through Friday or a Monday through Saturday?
If they were going to be working Saturdays, uh, we would count that as a working day. Um, I, I, I think that they'll get the work done much quicker than ten days.
And, and so you're, what I hear you saying is ten days should be easy, even if there happen to be some type of weather delay. Is there a penalty then if they don't complete in ten?
So we actually speak to that in the project manual regarding weather delays. And, um, we would be flexible if the site was rained out. We obviously don't want them paving in any sort of inclement weather that could affect the material that's being installed. Um, and portions of the project manual speak to weather delays. Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Um, anybody else have questions? Adam?
Uh, this is Councilmember Malater. Um, one question I have, and I, I see this across all of the projects. I think this is on the last one too and probably on the next one. Um, in the, uh, schedule that we've put out for bid, we always include that mobilization line. Um, and, you know, we've had some discussion about that in the past as, as the, um, bids have come back. And we see a lot of variability on that. And, you know, for a lack of better way of saying it, it, it almost is, um, a line for contractors to put in their margin, if you will. Um, do we need to have that line in there? Um, I question that because if we didn't have it, I bet that the contractors would simply, you know, put their prices of the other things to, to get to the end number they want to do. Um, but I think by not having that in there, um, it, it just seems to invite a markup that, uh, I'm just questioning if we actually need to have that in all of our contracts.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Malater. Yeah, I recall when, um, the Twenty Twenty project bids came in, we had this conversation about mobilization. And I, um, I hope this answers your question. The, the main reason that mobilization is included, uh, as an item, it's a lump sum item. And the project manual describes each pay item and how the contractor is going to get paid. And, and the better and clearer we can make the specifications, the better, um, bid prices we get. And, um, I think Gary mentioned it earlier, the MINDOT mumbo jumbo, but we like to adhere to MINDOT. A lot of the contractors that bid on our projects in the city work on MINDOT projects. And so we, uh, model specifications similarly. And mobilization is one of those items that MINDOT uses and that we use on all of our projects. And the big, the, the big reason mobilization is important is because it, per the contract, can get paid right away on that first pay voucher. Um, and these contractors have to expend a lot of resources and money typically to get a project off the ground. Material, um, equipment loaded, uh, traveled to site. You know, if their crews are from out of town and they need to come in for the night, those sorts of things. And, um, because it's not a specific work pay item where we need to inspect the work, uh, potentially test it before we pay them and accept it, it, uh, it allows them to get some cash flow to work on the project. Um, so let me know if that answered your question, Mr. Malater.
Um, yeah, the last part was informative that it's a cash flow item. I, I guess I, that makes sense. Um, I would say from a contracting perspective, there's probably a, a more effective way to do that. I would still say, uh, take the mobilization out, but add a part, part to the contract where they can get an advance upfront for some of the other costs to cover their cash flow needs. But, uh, I understand in context of the first part of your statement that, uh, you're kind of following the MINDOT standards, um, which I am not real pleased about. But, um, you know, i- it is what it is, but it's probably not the best way to contract. But I, I, I see where you're coming from. So thank, thank you for the information.
Okay, well, good to know too. Yeah. Yo. Otherwise, um, is there then a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the request for quotes for the Twenty Twenty Street Overlay Project?
John T., so moved.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Mike.
Okay, Mr. Malater seconded that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Mr. Malater, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
I'm voting no, and I'm for the same reason as before. And I'd like to ministry reflect that I, I recognize the project needs to be done. I'm objecting to the review process.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And, um, I'm Lisa Whalen, I vote aye. Motion passes for one. Um, Bruce dissenting. So we'll move on to, um, accept quotes and award the contract for the Twenty Twenty Crack Sealing Project. This is on Game Farm, um, Road, on Squire and on Chateau. Bet you, Adam, again?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You guys are getting a lot of me here in a row and I apologize. Um, but this is.
I'm just glad we can hear you.
Yeah, you can hear me, okay, that's good. Well, this is the last one, and this one's a little bit ahead of the other two that we just mentioned. Um, another quote project here, um, it's called the Twenty Twenty Crack Fill Project. Another way to say that would be Crack Sealing Project. Um, and it was presented, uh, the plans and specs were presented at the last council meeting. And since then, we, um, went out for quotes and I did indicate at the last meeting there would be three, um, quote, uh, contractors that we would reach out to, but we did only end up reaching out to these two, um, as, uh, we, we just couldn't get a, another contractor, I guess, interested. And so the two companies that we did reach out to have performed pavement repair in the city of Minutrist in the past. Um, the first one was Allied Blacktop Company and the second was Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, also known as Aztec. Um, and both were, uh, excited to receive the quote and wanted to do some work in the city. The quotes were received and Allied Blacktop Company had a bid of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and Aztec Corporation had a bid of twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand thirty dollars. Um, we had a higher estimate of construction, uh, repair and that included a contingency. Um, we, we formatted the contract similarly as, as the two that we just discussed. And I, I think it was evident that there was a cost benefit to giving that flexible schedule. We're not, uh, we have not awarded the contract, so we're not sure what the, um, schedule will be by these contractors. I would anticipate they'll probably go later into the season and that's why we saw these lower bid prices. Um, so staff would recommend accepting the quote from the, the low, or the low quote from Allied Blacktop Company in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, and that this project will be funded by the Road Maintenance Fund. Stand for any questions on, on this item?
All right. Um, flexible schedule, what was the completion date, um, Adam?
I don't have it in front of me. I would say that we are into September with the completion date and I could make my way there on my project files right now.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure that it was sometime before the end of September, that's all. I, my recollection, I couldn't remember. All right. Anybody else have questions?
September fifteenth, Madam Mayor.
September fifteenth, okay, same one, all right. Um, anybody else have questions? All right. Um, then is there a motion to accept the quotes and award the contract, um, in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars to Allied Blacktop for our, uh, Twenty Twenty Crack Sealing Project, including Game Farm, Squire and Chateau?
So moved. Councilmember Malater.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, Mr. Malater made the motion and is there a second?
I'll second it, it's Pam.
All right. And Ms. Mortenson made that second. Then all those in favor signify with aye. Um, uh, Lisa Whalen here, I will vote yes. Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
So motion passes, five oh. So that concludes our, um, business items. Thank you, Mr. Gepwap, for being with us so long and enduring all of these items. Thank you. So next we'll move on to staff reports, um, Mr. Barone.
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor and Council, just a couple of items to go through. Uh, just as a reminder, this is our last meeting of June. The next time we will get together will be five weeks from tonight on Monday, July twenty. We do not have a first Monday of July meeting. A couple of other things. The June ten mound fire commission meeting was canceled. Um, um, the long-term financial plan, uh, took a backseat according to Chief Peterson at Mound Fire to some other priorities. So we're scheduled to meet next on June tw- July twenty-two. So that will be upcoming, uh, shortly after our next meeting. And then, uh, tomorrow, June sixteenth starts the day of our back-to-business plan at City Hall whereby city staff will be starting to return to work. We're going to try to, uh, attend, uh, work both in person and remotely, hopefully at around a fifty-fifty split for most employees. Um, uh, the, the other kind of last piece, and we do have a checklist that we're going to review, but the one main item that prevents us from opening up to the public is to construct the plexiglass for our front desk. Gary was, he's our construction guy, he'll be manufacturing that thing for us. We do have the plexiglass. He was gone last week, so he didn't get a start on it, but I know he'll be working on it here, uh, the next week or so. And I anticipate that before we have our next city council meeting that we will be, uh, opening back up to the public. I don't have an exact date yet, but once I do, and once we figure it out, uh, we will certainly let the council members know probably via email. And I'm sure we'll be putting information out there on our webpage and Facebook, et cetera. But, well, we're still closing the public, but, uh, we're going to start implementing our, um, back-to-business plan for our city staff starting tomorrow. And those are all the items I have, Mayor. And I don't know if I have anybody else from city staff that has any items they want to speak about, but I'll let you give them that opportunity, otherwise I think that's it.
Okay, um, Mr. Abel, is there going to be a planning commission meeting next Monday?
No, Madam Mayor, there is not. The applicant, applicants are in no, no rush and, um, have allowed some extensions with, with two, there's a couple of vanes applications that we have, so there will not be a meeting.
All right, thank you then. Um, so then, um, any other staff reports? Otherwise we'll move on to council reports. Um, so I just have a quick report or a quick, um, uh, suggestion. So I've been, um, notified or in contact, I've been asked by some of the neighbors over there on Hardscrabble, what's the next step? And I said, well, the next step, uh, we have scheduled on our, um, list given out by Allison a few weeks back, um, is that we would do a neighborhood meeting, has, has been our practice for the last several years. And that neighborhood meeting generally would be sometime, uh, September timeframe. However, I did indicate that I wasn't exactly sure how that meeting would occur with, you know, depending on what transpires here in the next several months. And, um, I said those decisions would, um, or those details are yet to be determined. And it was suggested that maybe we hold an outdoor meeting on Hardscrabble out there in the neighborhood, uh, sometime this summer and, and he didn't suggest any timeframe. But I was thinking, no, that's not a bad idea. We could be outdoors, so the social distancing, six feet and more, wouldn't be a problem. Uh, we could meet onsite, um, if there's any questions, um, those could maybe be addressed immediately. I did speak to staff, to, um, Allison Fowski, our engineer, as well as to Mike Barone and asked if this is even doable, and they felt it was. So therefore, um, I really would like to suggest that maybe we put something on our calendars for a neighborhood meeting sometime maybe the end of August before it gets, so that we still have a lot of daylight left, um, after work hours. Is that something, um, the ca- council is interested in?
So if it rains, what do we do?
Well, we'd have to have, um, maybe two dates as options. So if the first one rained out, then we'd have a fallback for the second one. If the second one fell, um, out due to rain, maybe we'd, um, have to then re- regroup and reschedule. But I would suggest maybe having date number one, in case of rain, date number two.
And I think in the past, um, these neighborhood meetings, have they not been part of the normal council's meeting schedule? Like we've, we've done them on the same night as a council meeting?
Yes, we did. Um, I think we use, we've held them right prior to a council meeting in, in lieu of a work session. This one we might want to do at a, um, maybe we could forego a work session, um, but not necessarily have it right before the council meeting. I think that, that might be logistically a little difficult. Um, so that's just my suggestion, maybe doing it on the night outside of a council meeting night.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not, uh, trying to kibosh the outdoor activity here, but I think August is pretty much prime budget discussion and I don't think that we're going to want to, uh, dump a work session in order just to have this open house. We may have to have the open house be on a different night, not a council meeting night. I realize that's another meeting for not only staff but also the council. So, yeah. So.
No, that's what I was suggesting, since it's, um, because of the location and everything, that it really wouldn't work well to do, um, to do that on a council night. I think it would have to be a separate night.
I think so too. So, so that's what the council's voting on, a- another night on the calendar, but it would be outdoor and we'd go to the residents instead of the residents going to us.
The reason being is because of the, um, inability to make sure that we can, that, yeah, keep this, the distance requirement. And the reason I bring that up now is I thought if, um, we don't meet until July twentieth, we may want to get something on our calendar, although we could decide on July twentieth if that's something we want to do and when we want to do it. But then, um, you know, still getting four or five weeks notice to the residents. So is this something you want to bring back this side tonight?
Uh, this is Shannon Bruce. Um, when, when you're doing something outdoors and you, you have to have two dates instead of one, in case it rains, that's really two days that you have to reserve on your calendar, not just one. And my preference would be to have it coincide with the council meeting if we could at, at all. Um, I'm open to scheduling another day, but scheduling two days for this, to have it outdoors, I think is, um, I'd, I'd rather just schedule one day and maybe have it in, in the training room where it's a big room and we can keep distance and, um, but, but that's my preferences.
Yeah, the problem with, um, even the training room, as large it is, as it is, we have, we would have no idea how many people would show up. And then we may be confined to, um, the distance required, you know, then there may be an issue with the distance. Whereas if we hold it outdoors, that was the thought, that you have, you, you're not confined to that, that you don't have the space limitations. But, and, and we can just schedule one night and if we're lucky, it doesn't rain. And if we're not lucky, it rains. And then maybe we have to look at something different. Um, maybe we'd have to split it. We'd have to say we have two meetings, um, and half the residents come one night and half the residents come another night and we hold it at the police station, or the, you know, community room in the police station, training room. That might be another option, but then that is two nights.
And why, why don't we want to do this virtually?
We could, we could try and do that. Um, the problem with doing it virtually is a lot of times we have, um, uh, thing, we have the boards, Why don't we look at that and see what the problems may or may not be? I just want to make sure that we get that neighborhood meeting in and we don't, and if it is going to be an outdoor one, that we schedule that sooner than later. But we could schedule something at our June twentieth meeting.
Yeah, I would, I would vote for a virtual meeting if we could. I think that that would be the best thing to do. And I think people are used to doing Zoom meetings and I don't think it, you know, a year ago it might have been an issue, but I think today, I think people are used to it.
If we did a Zoom meeting though, we would not be able to have the visual, the visual board.
Oh, you can, yes, you can turn on your camera. Anybody that has a camera on their computer or their phone can, can be on camera.
What if they don't?
Then they, then their name pops up and they start talking, their name just comes up on the screen, so you know who's talking. They sign in.
Yeah. Well, that's what we're doing right now, but I'm just saying, what about the, where they have the poster boards up for you to go and look at, to discuss, you know, all the different things that are going on?
You display that on the computer, the presenter can share their screen.
So here's the thing, let's do this. Let's, let's bring this back to the July twentieth meeting. Staff can bring all the information that's needed, questions like what Pam's bringing and, and the pros and cons, and so then we can discuss it in better detail. Plus, we don't have to make a snap decision here tonight. I just wanted to bring it up, kind of start thinking about it, and then maybe we can make a decision at our June twentieth meeting. So is that okay with staff? Okay, all right. That was all I had for my reports. Anybody else have reports? Ms. Mortenson?
No.
Mr. Molitor?
No.
And Ms. Bruce?
Yes, I got a, actually it was via Facebook, I think. I received a letter that the Homeowners Association manager for Hunter's Crest sent to residents there, something about some vandalism of some water fountains that were getting filled with sand and, Mr. Peters, do you know anything about this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. We have had several incidents over the years with the drinking fountain at Lyndon Park. The kids get sand out of the volleyball court and they dump it down the drains, they plug it up, which it tells us to go out and have, my water guy, Mike, go disassemble the entire unit, clean it out, sanitize it, assemble it all, takes about an hour and a half, happens probably about three to six times a year. So on top of what happened with that, they also this year have filled the porta potty holding tank completely full of sand. So that was locked shut by them until they could clean it. We did bag ours because I wanted it shut down until we could notify the management company and then have them notify the residents there, what's going on with it and stuff. We have gotten it cleaned out, we have had it disinfected, we have everything done and is back in operation again, but we will probably be talking in the near future, this keeps happening, that we're going to have to come up with a plan, maybe just to eliminate it because it does take quite a bit of time and it is very frustrating for us to sit and have to do that all the time.
Okay, because the, the letter that was sent to the HOA said that, I'll just read from it, it says, "We have shut off the water, blah, blah, blah. This fountain will not be turned on again this summer. We are tired of having to go out and disassemble the fountain, clean out the drain, sanitize it and put it back in use." So you're saying that you did clean it and it's back in use?
Yes, we did. We've had, we, I took a number of calls on it, people asking for it to be reinstated and stuff. Of course, it's none of their kids out there that do it, but, so we opted to do it and I did notify the management company that we will be turning it back on, but if it is, becomes a persistent problem now here again, that we will have to discuss, you know, looking at, maybe shutting it off for the rest of the summer or something, it just, it's, you know, it's been a chronic problem over the years. I mean, even before I got here, it was happening, so it'll be something that has to be discussed with them and you guys in the future if this keeps up.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know what the status on it was. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Yep.
Okay, anybody, Mr. Trumpelin, do you have any reports?
We'll be attending Pioneer Sarah Creek this coming Thursday, the eighteenth.
All right, thank you. Also, just mention at our July twentieth meeting, we'll be having a special presentation by our LMCD representative, Michael Kirkwood. He'll talk to us about LMCD and also budget and so on. So he'll be coming at the July twentieth meeting. With that then, I believe we are finished with our meeting here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, this is Pam.
All right, Pam made that motion. Is there a second?
This is Shannon, I'll second.
Okay, and Shannon seconded that. Then all those in favor signify with aye. I vote aye, Pam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Shannon?
Aye.
Motion passes, five o, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.